I'd like to welcome you to our regular meeting this evening. We have with us tonight Pastor Michael Mathis from Mission Field Ministries to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by our pledge of allegiance, if you will. All please rise.
Oh Lord God Almighty, we are so grateful this evening for your loving kindness and how you have continued God to bless the town of Hope Mills. It's been a long year, Lord, but you have kept us and we are grateful for how you are allowing the city and the leaders of this city to continue to lead and for that community and the people that dwell here to continue to be safe and be blessed. We thank you so much for your mercy and your long suffering with us in that when we error in our ways. Lord, you forgive us. All we have to do is call on you as we do tonight for forgiveness. God, we're ever grateful for all the many things that you do. It's by your mind, God, that you position people in leadership. And so we thank you for our Mayor Jackie Warner and her family, oh Lord, asking you, God, to continue to protect her and keep her safe, not only her, Lord, but all the commissioners and their families. We thank you for their willingness, Lord, to contribute to the Town of Hope Mills suggestions and enact things, Lord, that work to the betterment of the people that live here. And so we thank you for that. We're ever grateful, Lord, for our first responders who willingly put their lives in harm's way to protect us, God. We ask, Lord, that you would keep warring angels at their backs. So many in these times now that would protect us go and they're harmed. And so, God, we beseech thee, we beck thee, God. We need, we know some hate law enforcement, but God, I believe there are more than love and need law enforcement than those that are against. And so we trust you for that, not only them when they're out there, Lord, but their families as well, and also the fire department and anyone else, God, that's part of this team of people that are doing all they can to make Hope Mills, the Town of Hope Mills, a wonderful place to live in and have fun. And now, Lord, we have, the agenda has already been set. We have men's wisdom, but God, we call on you for your wisdom tonight as decisions are being made, God, that you want made in this town. And we thank you now and we commit everything into your hands and Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add a public hearing case number ZNG 01022 to, are we doing it as new business or?
Consent. Okay, we have a public hearing that we would like to add to our consent agenda because it is asked to be continued until January 23rd, 2023.
I'm not sure if you can have a public hearing.
Okay. So go ahead and put it back. Okay, we'll put it under, under public hearings. No, we're not discussing, continuing. Can we do that, that way? Okay, thank you. We're not discussing, we're just continuing it.
I second that motion.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Any other additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion, motion.
A motion to approve, do I have a second? Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Official comments are next, and I'll start this evening with Commissioner Marley.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank everybody for coming out tonight. I don't really have anything other than I received a phone call from Steeplechase for, during Halloween, they wanted to give a shout out to the Hope Mills Police Department, specifically Officer Joseph that was in the neighborhood that night. He was going around, he was passing out candy and talking with kids and talking with the citizens in the neighborhood. And I had, actually I had a couple of phone calls on that that was very positive and they wanted to thank the police department for what they were doing out in the public that night. So that's all I got. I just wanted to let everybody know. They were doing a good job, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. And, and also to tie into that, I had so many compliments on our police department during the festival at the park, their presence, but also the things that they were doing to interact, so another big plus. Okay, Commissioner Scrowley?
Thank everyone for being here. The room is so crowded, no. For those that come, you know, for not just bad news, for good news. So thank you all for being here. It's, it's a pleasure. That is all I have.
Okay. Mayor Protiem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and again, thank you for those of you that are here. And I would save some of this to my reporting period, but I would just like to give kudos to the staff for having a successful Bites Booze and Brews celebration, trunk or treat. Looks like it was really, it was a lot of people. I didn't participate this year, but like it was a lot of families in the community that participated, the Historic Commission Committee. I enjoyed your event that you all had here on that same weekend. So it was a busy weekend, but a successful weekend. And so just like the command staff, and I see some other, congratulations to our staff for working hard through that busy holiday weekend. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Of the couple of things that I have, one is the mayor's coalition met and we did ethics training for the county. And we did have Commissioner Scrowley and Commissioner Mitchell that came to that training and we will receive the hours for it. It was, it was very nice to have the training, the way it was handled, but it was, that took place. We also, I was invited to the distinctly Fayetteville unveiling, the new logo for Fayetteville Cumberland County Tourism. And that was, I think Commissioner Scrowley and Commissioner Mitchell was there also. And what we found there was they had a very nice evening and a great big promotion, a lot of enthusiasm over their new logo. But again, that was a good event also that was being held at the same time. Also, I was invited, which we've done this, we do this about every six months, and especially we've done this most recently because there's a new Garrison Commander at Fort Bragg. But he invites the mayors of Fayetteville Spring Lake and Hope Mills to come. And we, last time we met virtually, this time we actually went out to the Divot and had breakfast with Colonel Wilcox and also Kevin Grease, which is the Fort Bragg Deputy Garrison Commander. It was excellent because what they want to do is to partner with our towns, wants to be more involved. They believe the military presence here is very important, but they also realize that with the things going on with the number of GIs coming in, they need locations, the places to stay, and they want to connect to the chambers, but they really want to connect to what's going on in our town. So it was, it was a well, well-received meeting, but it was also nice to know that especially Colonel Wilcox, he has really gotten on the ground running because he does want to find out what our police is doing, our fire department's doing, but he also wants to find out what we're doing with our VFWs and our American Legion. And he did give me the, all the things that they do and how you can get contacts and their budgets and things, so just a lot of good information. But that's, that's all I have, except, and I'll go to this one because I know you said you're done. Commissioner Mitchell was in charge of the Veterans Day Parade, and he always is very difficult or very hard on himself, but from everything I've heard and everybody that's had any compliments, it's all been good. I think the only thing that was a glitch this year was they did not have their thank you placards they normally give out, and somebody has mentioned that a couple of times, and it was just a, it just happened, didn't, they just somehow didn't get it. Today at 11:00 a.m., there was a reed-laying ceremony at Methodist. Tomorrow, we have the, our chambers having lunch at the, not tomorrow, the Wednesday, the ninth. We're having lunch, the chamber lunch will be down at Post 10, Post 670, and that's the post that's over on Doc Bennett Road. Then we have a family fishing workshop at Peckman Fishing Center, and that's from 1:00 to 5:00 on Thursday. Hope Mills veterans, we have the Field of Flags. We have, at 10:00 a.m., we have a Ride for a Reeve with Fort Bragg Harley-Davidson. And then we have our Veterans Day Ceremony will be at 3:00 p.m. at the Veterans Memorial Park. And then the Chili Cook-Off and the Family Fun Event all takes place at Dirtbag L's on the 12th. If you haven't thought about entering Chili, I don't think it's too late, but you do have to pay to enter and there are prizes. And then the last but not least, on Saturday evening, there's a couple of things going on with the Stephen Cohen Military Family, and that's from 6:00 to 8:00. But just a lot of worthwhile events, but all this was also part of the event distinctly Fayetteville because they play a key role in the tourism piece with these heroes homecoming events.
Have you done it yet?
Oh, have you done it yet? I'm sorry. That's the new logo. Have you done it yet?
Well, it's been a while since we've had it, so we still have it in the gym.
Okay. If, if we have, and it's proposed, we're gonna have bad weather on Friday. If we do, we'll do like we did last year and we'll move it in the gym. So our Veterans Day service at 3:00 would move inside, and we use this, this side of the gym as far as getting in and out. It worked really well when we had to do it last time.
Yes.
Okay?
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening, I should say. I want to thank everyone that came out, and I hope you enjoyed the parade. Matter of fact, last year, we had extreme cold weather. This year, we had extreme warm weather. But based on the comments I heard, that everyone said it was a good parade. But if those of you that want to see the parade, if you've seen anything that we can do better, any recommendations, any improvements that we can do to make the parade more fine feeling, please don't hesitate to reach out to the county and let us know so that we can accommodate those requests. Other than that, thank everybody for coming out.
Commissioner Lay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also, I guess we could have made a recording of this, like to thank those who showed up this evening for this meeting. I was asked to give a shout out to the fire departments. My daughter had a fire in her shed a couple of weeks ago, and she said it was only minutes till there was three different fire departments setting in her yard. And she lives on Heather Street off of Gulfview. No one got hurt, everyone's safe. But for everybody who had something to do with that, thank you. I'm really happy because I get to go see my brother who has cancer in Kentucky next week. Want everybody to pray for him, please? I haven't seen him since back in the spring. Some days he's up walking around, other days he's down. I guess that's to be expected, but I just appreciate the good Lord making possible for that to happen. I will have to miss the Veterans Day ceremonies in order to, to make that trip. We'll be leaving Wednesday afternoon to go up there. I'm really proud of the things that our staff has done. I really want to give a shout out to my fellow commissioners for their work in attending Just hope that we can continue the good work that we're having together as a team. I think this board has molded well, real well. Pastor, thank you for the prayer. That's all, Mayor. I can't do too much more.
I have one last thing I wasn't gonna forget, but I did not realize, and maybe some of you do, that we have a rodeo in Hope Mills. It's called Shady Acres Rodeo, and it's out off of Chickenfoot Road. I was invited out there to do a Veterans Day special script for a group of show horses that they performed, and of course, they had a horse with a missing rider. They had bull riding, they have, and they have, the competition is for Rodeo 22, and this is all geared, just like the Swim 22 that we did, it's for suicide awareness. And so it's, it was a great event, and the show gals are horse riders that compete, and they'll be in the Raleigh Parade. But that was something that they've been there 27 years, and I felt very guilty that it's taken me that long to find them. But now, next thing we have is presentations, and we have Mr. Scott Garner here tonight to give us an update on our public safety building. I'll turn it over to you, sir. Welcome, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm glad to be with you tonight. We have a report on the building next door. We are in the throes of trying to finish, and as you can imagine, there are about a million things they have to do, so there's a lot of coordination to be done. There's still work to be done, but we're trying to finish. We're cleaning, we're testing, we're starting up equipment. They have had the final electrical inspection, plumbing and mechanical inspection that will be scheduled very soon. We're doing a punch list, which is pretty long, but that's part of the process. But we, we will, we will be finished soon. We have a stocking permit, which means that we can put in the appliances and furniture, but only vendors and workers are allowed in the building, no visitors. We hope to get a TCO, a temporary certificate of occupancy. The contractor thinks we'll get it this week. I think it's realistic, we'll get it before Thanksgiving. I'm not sure when, but there are a lot of things that have to happen, so we're chipping away at them, one at a time. Next step will be to demolish the existing fire station and construct the apparatus safer out front and the fire parking out back, and then the new parking lot to have Town Hall and Parks and Rec. And that is gonna be a little bit of a testing situation because it's gonna take three to four months to do that. We don't know what the winter weather will be, so parking is gonna be at a premium around here, and it's gonna be a little testing, but it'll be worth it when we get through. So the deadline for everything to be complete is the 1st of March. We do not have any change orders this month, and I'm happy to say that. We probably will have one next month, maybe more, but at least one, because NCDOT and Duke Energy took our front lawn along Rockfish as an easement. And so we already had put up the flag bowls, we had to move them, we had to, we're gonna have to do some additional grading, we're gonna have to rearrange the landscaping, we're gonna have to relocate the police and fire memorials. They were not in place, but we have to have a new configuration for them and locate them. It's not so, it's a little bit of a test because we have so many easements. We have a sewage easement, which is 20 feet wide, and then we have this NCDOT and Duke Energy easement. So you kind of have to play around with all those things and fit them in there. But they're putting in the landscaping, and we're gonna have a building soon, soon. So we're all looking forward to that. The project, the overall project was 85% complete, and completion date, as I said, the 1st of March for the total project. So we are in budget, we're on schedule, and if we have any questions.
Anyone have a question in reference to?
What's the date that we close off our parking lot to all vehicles?
It's coming up. Wednesday. I know it's soon.
Right after the election.
Okay. They've already put a fence, I saw, they've started.
Yeah, they're waiting. One more day.
Yeah, get the election over with.
So after Election Day, they'll close it off and start the demolition.
Okay.
Mr. Gunnar, the sidewalks and things out front look great. It's a shame you have to go in there and disturb the flag bowls.
It is.
But as my dad always said, it is what it is.
Well, we had to do that, so that's part of what we have to do.
Thank you, sir.
But it's gonna work out.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a presentation by Jamie Gesslin, and this young lady is our victim advocate. She also travels with our Houston Police Department, and she was at the domestic violence presentation, was down at the lake, and she was up here for the Bites Booze and Brews. And I just think we're very fortunate to have her, and she is coming to introduce herself so everybody can know who she is.
All right. Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Like she said, my name's Jamie Gessline. I'm the victim advocate for the Hope Mills Police Department. I appreciate y'all having me to speak about what I do. As the victim advocate, I am essentially the liaison for our victims of crime to help them gather resources that they may need moving forward after this terrible thing has happened to them, keeping them informed of the criminal justice process and where they are with their case, how things are moving forward, and explaining that to someone who has possibly never experienced anything within the criminal justice system before. Helping them stay informed allows prosecution to move forward, and so it's very essential for, you know, making sure those victims are taken care of and are able to feel involved and also hold the offenders accountable for what they've done. I also assist individuals with filing for victims' compensation, which is a program to make sure that victims of crime don't take on a financial burden for what's happened to them. I help them, you know, again, find counseling resources, things that they may need to move forward. But then one of the other major things that I do in this position is I run the Domestic Violence Protective Order Remote Filing Site, and that's here locally in Hope Mills. Right now, we do it here in this building in Town Hall. But once we move into the new building for the police department, I'll be housed over there, and that's where Domestic Violence Protective Order filing will take place. So that process is for victims of, whether it's domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, or any type of harassment that they may be experiencing from a partner that they have a domestic relationship with. If they need to file for essentially a restraining order, they can do that here. And that's something that's really beneficial because previously, the only filing sites were downtown at the Cumberland County Courthouse and a few other remote filing sites that were also in downtown. So that was a good 20 or so minutes that people were having to travel to get to those locations. But by having it here in Hope Mills, it makes it a lot more accessible, especially for people that are already dealing with such a stressful and traumatic situation. They may be also having to deal with childcare and work and everything. So to not have to do that lengthy process so far away from their home and from where they stay hopefully makes it a little bit easier on them. So those are the major things that I do. I serve victims of all crime. It doesn't matter necessarily what the victimization was. It could be assault or domestic violence, all the way ranging to assisting the loved ones of homicide victims. So I'm here for anyone that may need that assistance for victims of crime. I serve victims of crime for the Hope Mills Police Department. But the Domestic Violence Protective Order filing site is open to anyone. It doesn't matter what jurisdiction they live in, it doesn't matter what jurisdiction things took place, or where they may have reported the crime to. They can come here. This is the place that's most accessible for them, or even if they need to get away from where everything happened, and they need to go somewhere that their user may not be able to find them. Coming here to Hope Mills is available to anyone that may need it. All of the assistance that I provide is free and it's confidential, so their information is not gonna be shared, it's not gonna be broadcast anywhere. I am here to assist anyone that may need it. So my contact information is located on the Town of Hope Mills website under the Police Department's section. My phone number and email address are on there. I'm located at the police department for anyone that may need me. And then also, I left some of my business cards and brochures that our patrol carries around in their car, and they're able to provide that to anyone they come in contact on scene. But I've left some of those here for anyone that's here at the meeting that may want to grab some, whether it's for yourself, for a friend, or if you want to keep them at your business or office that you work in, to be able to share that with anyone that may need it. So I always hope that no one ever needs my assistance. I never want anyone to have to come and meet with me because of what's happened, but if anyone ever does need that assistance, help is here. I'm here to help people get connected to the resources that they may need. So thank you all for letting me speak tonight, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for?
Where's your office currently? It's?
So currently, my office here is on the back hall.
Okay.
And so I'm here to do Domestic Violence Protective Order filings. That's available Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. That's the cutoff time that we have because the courthouse has a cutoff time of when they're able to accept filings in the afternoon. So 8:30 until 12:30.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Next, we have our Veterans Day proclamation. Veterans Day is the day America sets aside to thank and honor all those who served honorably in our nation's military, whereas Veterans Day is a day to honor veterans, to acknowledge their contributions to our national security are appreciated, and to underscore the fact that all those who have served have sacrificed and done their duty. Whereas America is greatly indebted to those who have sacrificed for the liberty and security of our country, whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces and hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving the armed forces during the past century. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by the people of the United States, whereas armed force members have been unrelenting in battle, unwavering in loyalty, and unmatched in honor, and have demonstrated that freedom is the most powerful force on earth. Whereas VFW Post 10630 and Auxiliary have coordinated with other veterans and civic organizations in the Hope Mills area to provide this special ceremony of remembrance. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim Friday, November the 11th, as Veterans Day in the Town of Hope Mills in tribute to the veterans of all wars, the living, the disabled, and the dead, and I urge all citizens to join in the expression of appreciation to the many veterans in our community who have given so much in our behalf in times of both war and peace. Next, we have the Small Business Saturday proclamation. The government of Hope Mills, North Carolina celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. Whereas according to the United NCS Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of the net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.8% of employees in the private sector in the United States. 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday. 70% report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. 58% of shoppers report they shopped online with small business, and 54% report they dined or ordered takeout for small restaurant, bar, café. Whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed a Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore, I Mayor Jackie Warner, Mayor of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim November 26th as Small Business Saturday and urge all residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. Next, we have public hearing. Our first public hearing is for Annexation A 2022-06, a non-contiguous annexation at intersection of Brooklyn Circle and US 301 South. It contains 3.32 acres, more last duly recorded in Platte Book 148, page 177. If annexation accepted, the board is requested authorize staff to present initial zoning to the planning board. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Madam Mayor, I'm for it. This is just a typical annexation. Obviously, we've gone through the first two steps in the process, and this is the ultimate hearing that you should have in your package. And this is the ultimate hearing that you should have in your package, the typical letter from the plan review staff and a request for a C two P zoning. What I think is pretty self-explanatory with the annexation, but what you have in your package, what I have on the screen here, that will accompany all annexations from now on. This is the entire process. So if you look at this, it takes you from the very first step, which is the submission of the petition, the list of items that's needed for an initial submission. But it's a flowchart entry point, and it takes you through. So let me say, all documents that have been required, all papers submitted to our town clerk to answer the question, report with the first hearing, which is acceptance of the petition. If no, you go right back around to the end, Jane. And so if you recall, there are always three hearings that are tied to the initial portion of the annexation. First hearing is the acceptance of the petition where our town clerk literally just tells you guys that we have petition and this. The very next hearing, which is the next available board meeting, she's basically, you're directing her at that first hearing to receive the self-sufficiency. That's the second hearing where she's telling you she's actually investigating the Platte Book and all her information, the pin numbers, possible other things of that nature. And then, at that point, she assigns a resolution to the petition and she sets the public hearing, which is what you have for you tonight. After the public hearing, if you guys deny the actual case, you see the infograph says that if denied, any development of the subject property would be under the jurisdiction and account. That's ultimately what happens if you deny annexation. If you do approve the annexation, the corporate limits are extended and we move to the initial zoning request. After, I'm authorized to proceed with the initial zoning request if the annexation is approved. We go to the planning board and it comes back to you for the Hope Mills Board to ultimately approve the initial zoning. And if you notice, everything you see in yellow are the three public hearings that are tied to the entire process. It also says in the fine print that the second public hearing, which is the planning board, is the first opportunity for notice letters from our staff to be mailed out to the general public. This has now been put on our website so that the general public is fully aware at what stage of this process should they anticipate getting notice letters? But what stage of the process where the public hearing tonight, that's just advertised in the paper by the town clerk, is not sending out notice letters to that. So there was confusion. This explains the entire process. But what I have for you after that is this portion that is a track. So what it tells you is that the first four steps that you guys completed, she's accepted the petition, we've done the self-sufficiency, denied you have the public hearing. So this also tells you where we are in the process. This is just me putting this in here. And for every annexation, you'll see this particular chart. And when it comes back to us after the planning board, you'll see the same chart with the process that we've completed. Also kind of faded out as well. But I wanted to give, this is why I came here tonight. The annexation that we requested is pretty typical. But I really wanted to have my own on the record that we have put that on our website. And that's really an infograph for the general public. This is the second infograph we have put up on our website. The first one that we did explains the permitting process. And so you're going to see another one coming up next week that is the resoning process of that nature so that people are aware of what the entire process, of what they are and at what stage. Be heard. But I'll put a question in there.
Anyone have any question for Mr. McLaughlin?
I'm of course, my office. I want to take this time and say thank you very much for putting this together because I know you get tired of me calling you.
Well, you see, you call, but this is mainly for the general public.
Yes.
Because a lot of times, I understand the confusion where they're not seeing a letter sent to them for tonight's hearing. But if they get the one for the initial zoning, they're thinking someone...
Then you have to edit your thing because it says "general public notified" in your first yellow box.
Yes, because she sends a notification to the news.
Okay.
And so what I mean by that is, I think for the last one, I might need to add that the notice letters go out for the second.
Because it doesn't specify, so.
But a lot of people are confused in terms of when they get a notice letter, did we send it late? What is that with the process? We don't typically send notice letters to adjacent properties for the initial public hearing.
And I guess my objective also was, when the public sees this, to get this, they need to know, okay, when do I get to ask those questions? When do I need to be involved to making sure that I'm in agreement with the annexation process? And how's it going to impact me and affect me? And just as us as board members sitting up here, when do we get to ask those tough questions as well to avoid the fair school that we had a couple of meetings ago?
And this also opens up the door for them to contact me if they need clarification. That's typically what that means. So like I said, we're taking this approach with every one of our processes. We have the permitting process of this, the second, we're going to reschedule next week and any of our other processes. And that's just meant for us to continue to convey information to the public so we can remain transparent.
Thank you.
But I do think we have a request for a C two P initial zoning authorization that's tied to the request for annexation.
Motion to open public hearing.
I got a question.
Okay, go ahead, all righty.
Isn't there a building already on that property?
Yes, if you look at my staff report, this one is a little different. I wouldn't, we didn't, but sometimes, and this is why people don't realize, sometimes we're unpopular with the public, sometimes we're unpopular with the government. This guy went to the county, he had a permit, and I might apply to annexation. And so we have that P W C agreement that triggers the petition for annexation. We voluntarily submitted when they asked for water and sewer. And so I guess he didn't realize that was the case. And now his water permit is held up with P W C because when they actually got the request for water and sewer, they contacted us immediately. And this is what we kicked in, the annexation waters. So a lot of people don't know, part of our plan review team is a staff member of P W C. So we have a very, very relationship with them. But if you look in your notes from inspections, if they had that permit issued in the county, they have to get the CO in the county. You're still gonna annex into the town. But our inspectors are not gonna give a CO on the building that they didn't permit. So that's where it looks like there's a development already there. It is a building there. But he got, I wouldn't, I don't want to say deed, but there was basically that system of checks and balances that we keep talking about. That's what sprung in for us to be notified by P W C that they had actually contacted them or us. And so they are annexing it when I contacted them, they went ahead and submitted, which is why we're here now. That's why you have that building.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Is there anyone in opposition to this annexation? Hearing none, seeing none.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing. Any other questions for Mr. McLaughlin in reference to this? Any action?
Ma'am, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Annexation A twenty twenty-two dash oh six and authorize staff to begin the initial zoning process to designate the development under the C two P Plan Service of Retail District.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. The next item on our agenda is public comments. We did not have anyone sign up tonight. Next is our consent agenda. We did add the rescheduling of the public hearing from tonight to January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. If, is there anything on the consent agenda that you'd like to discuss more? Or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next item is old business, and there is none. New business is discussion of the historical district of Hope Mills on Trade Street. This was requested by Commissioner Mitchell, and I believe, I'll just turn it over to Commissioner Mitchell.
All right, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I actually had a couple of conversations with a couple of members that own businesses on Trade Street. And they were saying, why come the town never do anything on Trade Street down here? It's considered a historical area. But there don't seem to be anything happening down there. If I'm not mistaken, we were just talking earlier. The last time we had anything down there significant was probably twenty seventeen. And for an area to go have a void like that for an extended period of time that we call a historical area, it just doesn't make any sense. And they was also asking that, can the town do anything to help improve the area for the coming holidays, Christmas? I briefly talked to Lamarcos, and he have a couple of ideas. And I don't know, have any other ideas, other ideas been going around? I don't even know if the Appearance Committee has looked into doing anything. But we have Ms. Sally Bailey out there and the public out there. Have you had any discussion about the historical area there, Ms. Bailey?
Sorry, say that again.
If you don't mind.
Hi. Good evening, I'm Sally Bailey, five eight, seven ninety Ridge Road. And I'm on the Appearance Commission. We had talked about it, it came up in the Appearance Commission, okay, about putting some planters down there, see if we could not make the place a little bit more presentable, okay? A little more home friendly. And so really, and I talked about it a few minutes, because I've seen it with anyone from Hope Mills. And I went down there and measured the windows, okay, the front. And we have something like, give me the real. There's quite a few windows down there, all right? So we have like nineteen flower planters to put in down there. And what the flower planters will be, and you'll have to think, you'll see the metal ones, and they have the little racks, it looks like a rack. And you put the mulch in the top of it, and then you put your flowers in there, okay? They're really pretty, they attach to the brick with the, so that they cannot be pulled off, they're not gonna fall off, you ready? So I counted like nineteen that we would use for. And it's extremely expensive, I'll be the first one to admit it. I gave one down to Bales because that's the only place I knew that had Walmart and stuff. Used to have stuff on that, but they don't carry that anymore. So I went to Bales because that's the closest place to us, okay? And for the nineteen, now these things vary in the windows. Are like forty-three inches wide and long. Some of them are sixty, okay? Fifty-six, forty-five, thirty, they vary in so many. But there are quite a few of them that are the sixty inch across, all right? So in order to get something like that, you've got to have a huge flower, right? So they're like fifty-four ninety-five for one stack. And it's not even maybe sixty inches, you're gonna have to center it around the window. Now you could maybe put two in there, two of the smaller ones, they'd probably look better if you just put one large one, okay? Some of the smaller windows, of course, they're small, they're forty-three inches. So you can put a small one in there that's not the forty-eight ninety-five. Most of them are one like fifty-four ninety-five. And even the ones that are seventy-nine inches, you're gonna have to have two of them to put in there. Two of the big, long planters to go in there to make it look right. So we ended up with doing that. The price on it was one thousand seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. And for that, I did not add tax to it or anything, we just wanted estimates, start working with this and see which way we could go with it. As far as I know, there's what, one, two, three, four businesses, maybe five businesses that are open that are working all the time or some, or a reasonable amount of time. There's another person there who owns the funeral home. And he's got a place on Trade Street too. Don't know how much he's open. So we have to think about that too. I really think the planters will look wonderful down there. I know it's pricey, but then we gotta put flowers in them. Now, my understanding is those that have business down there will be more than happy to keep them watered during the months that they need to be watered. Some even said something, they put flowers in them. But I really think that might be our responsibility to do that and put them out there. And they all look good, they're all the same and everything like that, we would have the responsibility. If we were to put that much money in planters, we may put that much responsibility in the flowers so that it looks nice. So that was my thing on that one. Any questions on anything that I can answer for y'all?
No, thank you for doing that research. And I really think though, that something we can do as a town, as a community, to really enhance that area. Because it's been elected for years now, and I think it's time that we move forward in trying to help get that area to look at least somewhat decent because it's a bypass. A lot of folks travel through that area. And I know that the Historical Preservation Committee has talked a couple of times about doing something at one point. And I really think that maybe we can look at collaborating. The Appearance Committee and the Historical Preservation Committee can probably come together and come up with some strategies and ideas to enhance the beautification of the area. I mean, but trust me, for years, we have done nothing, and it's time to stop doing nothing, it's time to do something. That's all there, Madam Mayor. Go ahead.
And I was gonna ask too, the, I've been asked from people down there, the suntan place, Carolina Suntan, it's been closed for many years now, four years or so. Is there not something, there's actually people going in the backside of it now? It's got mold and stuff in it. It needs to probably be condemned. But I don't know where we are with that. I just know that it was brought to my attention that they've had, that people now are going in the backside of it and that it's not safe because of the damage, the roof is falling in and everything. I don't know what you do. I know that in some small towns, and I know Parkton is one right now, they've actually taken down a whole building because of the age of the building and it was just too far gone to repair it. But that was the other thing, the request was, could we do anything with? Yeah, I guess that would be the, thank you, Sally.
Thank you. Thank the back, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I went in that building about three years ago, two and a half years ago, fire marshal was fine. And it had numerous, like you said, mold and structural issues in Miami. And it's my understanding that the fire marshal notified at that time he owned the building. Something needs to be done to it. Condemnation could be considered. But we have to be careful with that because those buildings down there, if I'm not mistaken, have firewalls. And they're party walls. And what that means is, is firewalls create separate, obviously separate buildings and if you tear a structure down, you jeopardize the firewalls. So it has to be something that we sit down with the army. And, but you're correct, it's nothing but in there. And like I say, it's been a festering issue. And we just don't seem to get anything done with the ownership.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Aren't those buildings in the historical district?
They're, yes.
It's in the district, so we don't have any potential.
But then we have to be careful about considering tearing something down like that, being a historical district.
Building code, Commissioner Lee, it is not on the historical registry.
That's right.
That doesn't, that doesn't pertain.
We need to check it out good before.
Yes, yes, sir, it's gotta be on the National Historical Registry in some sort. And it has to have documentation. Other than that, building code wise, it's not considered.
There's said two ladies are here in the front row.
We're hearing otherwise.
That are very educated on that stuff and...
If the house within the historic district, which is on Thale and Riley and in Washington DC currently, that the building itself has protection lying within the historic district, even to passing window boxes to historic buildings.
If that's the case, then we have to have, whatever it's my boss, the permits and everything, they have to find that to extend our protection. If that's the case, then we have to have, whatever it's my boss, the permission division, they have to find the tickets that are protected. That is in the historical registry.
Well, the town has a copy of the historic district, and Raleigh has a copy of the historic district. And you can move like it. Yeah, this is the math that you buy after someone happens.
Yes, it's their responsibility to provide it to those.
But if they, but if they're buying property, and they don't necessarily know that it's in the historic district, then it's not. So the town have some responsibility to tell them.
I think Mr. McLachlan, can you answer that? I know we've been through this before.
Before.
Thank you.
About ten years ago.
Thank you Kenny.
This is the same argument for the parish house. Parish house was inside the same district. It's gone. Because legally tore down. Because it's not designated as a structure. That has been. None of them.
Just the land.
Always been the case where, I think there's a misconception where the district is adopted. But nobody ever physically designated any of the structures. We do have generic design guidelines to a certain degree, but most of that applies to construction. We're just talking about most of the activity that we've had on Trade Street, it's just people on it and trying to occupy a building. I've been here eight years. The true test of historic district is a request to issue a certificate of appropriateness. That's the legal document that I have attached to construction. And a historic district that is officially designated as such. We haven't had it. And so we did renovations to the museum, the millhouse, but we ended up selling that. And so, we always use the parish house as the perfect example, there was a lot of contention with that. But if that building was designated and had protections, because, simply because it was located within that boundary, we would not have legally been able to tear it down.
And we've had that challenge before, because where the historical district starts up on Lakeview, the house that was there, the superintendent's house was torn down. Some people assume that the house that sits back off the road is historical, because it looks like it might be. That's why when the sign sits up there, but that property, the land would be where it was located, but the house is gone. Same thing where the new Heritage Village is gonna be built. The houses that were sitting there on Patterson Street that were torn down, those were actually some of the original millhouses. And when those were torn down, again, that land is considered that, so I'm not sure what happens when you rebuild houses on it. I don't think there was any kind of restrictions when the houses were built up on Lakeview.
And I'll give Carleen's as another example. It looks historic.
Mm-hmm.
It looks amazing, like a Victorian house. That is not the historical character of homes in this area. So the minute you renovated that building, you were told it was repaired beyond the ability for it to be designated. If you just sit it inside that boundary, there aren't the protections needed if you do an official report. Most official reports that designated building are about seventy to eighty pages. Because at that point, you're looking at that building, you're talking about the architectural elements of the fascia board, you're talking about the type of windows that have to be put. So if there is a renovation done to it, you have to do it specifically tied to that period. That type of window, that type of structure.
What Fayetteville had with the Prince Charles Hotel, with the windows and the issues with that.
That's an officially designated structure. In my opinion, if you look up the registry, I think there's a church in, I think God is the name of it, but it's not in Hope Mills. That's the closest thing to us. I do think that chapel would have been a great candidate, but we all decided that, I don't think we could afford with designated building. But there has been a lot of the dilemmas that have always plagued this conversation.
And I believe the millhouses also on Ellison Street, they don't qualify any longer. And my particular house, in nineteen hundred when it was built, it had a Victorian porch on it. Just like the Gilbert House on Page Street, Trade Street. And when it was remodeled in the fifties, that new look took it off any possibility. And we did that study, we had a consultant do the study, because it is a hundred and twenty-two years old, but it doesn't qualify.
And I think there's some confusion, but there's an inventory that we did. It's very thick, but that's just, in my opinion, the county went around and just, inventory wasn't there now. That's not an official historic report that has to be done, that actually says this particular building meets this particular character.
Well, let me, let me ask this, Madam Mayor, if I may. So, okay, as the building sits now, when was the last time anything, as far as the fascia, well, the historical side, we don't know. When was the last time anything was changed to it from it being original? The buildings on Trade Street, any of, like that long strip? I don't know what the building.
They've been changed over and over again.
To me, I think we have to be careful too, we're talking exterior changes.
Yeah.
And so, in the eight years I've been here, I haven't seen any major exterior work. And I do think the building that the chamber is in, God had approached us about changing the steps, that. But when we told him, you know, we were kind of going through, he ended up backing off, you know, moving forward. But we don't have now, we have adopted some generic guidelines as placeholders, but that was the kind of, but it never put.
Well, here's my thing, so if we haven't, if we haven't done any large scale, you know, what justifies historic? If we haven't done anything since nineteen fifty, I mean, you're talking how many years, seventy years, is that considered historic?
I'm sort of way out on this.
I mean, you know, I'm turning.
We had this come up a couple of years ago. And the Department of Cultural Resources, what kind of Department of Cultural Resources, is really the one, so you have to have a historic committee. It has to designate it as a landmark. They have to put a full report together about the history and all that stuff, and submit it to the Department of Cultural Resources. And does their own study to determine if it fits the criteria. As I have been told, I believe we were told by Department of Cultural Resources, the buildings that we have in that historic site, they don't believe qualify. I don't know that we got official work from them on that, that was the unofficial conversation that we had. But none of the building, there's a statutory process to designate a building as a historic landmark. Which requires us to have a Historic Preservation Commission, which I don't believe we have. And the commission would have to designate it, submit it to the Department of Cultural Resources. And considers that, and, you know, may ask for additional information or something like that. And then only then it can be designated as a historic. Just because the building is in the historic district doesn't give it any special qualification.
I think that's what's.
Yeah, yes, sir.
So, so, Rise of Maker Colorado, we did a National Historic District for the whole downtown. History Colorado paid for the several hundred thousand dollars to do all the surveys. We had three buildings that qualify, and this is where the entire United States Army Cavalry Indian history for the country with Trail Tears massacre. Significantly historic, only three of our buildings qualified, and if, most of those inventories are hundreds of pages per thing, and most of them have been so modified. So unless you have state registry or national registry, I don't believe you can have a local registry of any of the facilities, I've not come across that here. You have to receive state or federal monies. And if you've gotten grants and monies from those entities, they are somewhat protected and required for limitations on units. But the thing about preservation and history is, you don't want just things tore down and you lose it all. You want to have archivists and people that can survey it, take pictures, and capture that before they, the private owner may be able to demo it. But that's an important part about preservation, is making sure that it's not just gone and you lose it all. So that, I mean, I, you can go to the maker website and look at their inventory, it's on the webpage, it's very. So, so we're, you know, what we have here is actually an overlay district planning function. I don't wanna rehash that, but I do have intimate knowledge about going through that process.
Well, if you also look at the buildings that are down there that have been added, like where the old theater was, and the other things that have been added, there was no direction, and when the depot was torn down, the boarding house burned. I mean, there were so many buildings down there that took the spot that would have been that historical spot. That probably our goal should be to just have something saying what was here, because there are pictures out there. Because I think that's what's missing right now, is just the connection. The Gilbert House back there in the back, that has been changed now so drastically that it doesn't look like it did. But it's still more Victorian, because that's the way Carleen's, my house, looked. The Gilbert Pharmacy, that's another one, that's one of the original buildings that was here, you know, a long, long time. But, you know, the funeral home, the post office, all those, that whole area is not anywhere like what it was. So I think that's what we have to take a look at.
And any of those histories, I mean, they go back to every ownership, all of the history, and it's a very detailed process to capture.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If you don't mind, wasn't planning for this to get this in depth. However, we've been down this road before, ten, twelve years ago, if I'm not mistaken, because I think we had a committee formed to do this. Somebody formed the ball, and nobody picked it up and started moving it again, and the ball still landed on the field. That's what happened initially, and that's why we're still going over and over with this stuff. However, still need to do something, so we need to figure out what we need to do legally, so that we can begin to move forward, and, I mean, let's do something.
I will chime in, and I think Scott or Dan just said, it's really an overlay district. It's not functioning like the true historic district.
Right.
But there is a lot of potential there for development. This might be a little round.
You're trying to get cut. You say development, and people like up there goes.
Modification.
If you go look at Aberdeen, Aberdeen has done it, their little Highway Five Main Street there, yes, sir?
Um, not to be the bad guy, but I got an email here from TAB Five, where some of the business owners were asking for Christmas decorations, now we're talking about overlay districts? We're talking about where their buildings, I mean, we're getting way off subject here. You know, this email asked for Christmas decorations, and then we went from Christmas decorations to flower pot, we need to. I mean, this is a discussion we're having for another time and another place.
What do you want to do for Christmas decorations?
I'm all for, if they want some decorations, the town put some lights around the poles like they requested, some banners up, you know, to dress it up, make it look good, but, you know, we need to get back on.
Well, now we had, there've been banners down there before, I don't know what, I guess the best thing we could do is to find out what Parks and Rec has, if there's a plan already for Christmas decorations, you got an idea?
Well, that was one of the suggestions, because, one of the things that we were having issues with is like, I know Appearance Commission is doing Christmas stuff. Historic Preservation, they're, we're doing Christmas stuff, and so it's like, all these Christmas events are going on, but there's no coordination between them. And what we need to have is like a big old meeting where all these committees that are trying to do Christmas stuff can.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I gotta have a couple of things to say, because I haven't said anything. I think, when I joined this board three years ago, Ashley, the young lady that's doing the strategic planning, I thought that in that strategic planning, we were talking about doing a plan that included doing something with downtown. Because I think the flower pots and all this stuff that we're talking about are nice, but I think there needs to be a long-term plan to over, to revamp completely how downtown looks. Other than that, I think you're putting lipstick on a pig. And I don't mean to be ugly by saying that, I agree, and we were, the committees were supposed to have met at the beginning of this year to coordinate their efforts, to talk about everything that we're gonna do for the full year, it never happened. Because then maybe we wouldn't be doing these things, because now we're overlapping with one another, instead of communicating with one another. And I am in agreeance with Commissioner Marley, that this is probably a budget strategic planning conversation about downtown Hope Mills, but that these committees, they were supposed to have gotten together at the beginning of the year to talk about these, the efforts that they wanted to do for the entire year, so now that we're not all doing competing things.
Doing the same things.
Madam Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I thought we already had a standard in town where Parks and Recreation, or someone put up Christmas decorations and everywhere.
We have a plan, and we follow our budget. So that's mostly the major materials, and Trade Street is not there, and Park and Rec is.
Lamarcos, can you help us?
Yes, so, since I've been here, the folks have always been making it on Main Street, and a few other streets. Did talk to Jamie, who works in our maintenance division. And she does have a reason that she's always put on Trade Street. And so, we will put those on Trade Street. But in addition to that, we do have LED lights that were at Twinkle Trail here, at the park, since we're not doing that anymore, and the trail's been closed. We instructed Jamie to line the streets with those LED lights. So, we do have that available, and she's been instructed to put those along Trade Street.
Thank you, sir. Make it happen.
And Lamarcos, would it be possible, we did this when we had our, some of our other celebrations, is we had a member from each committee, and they met with Parks and Rec, if you recall, for planning purposes, so that way we had representation from each committee on that main committee, we did it for the Lake Festival Committee. If you'll remember, we had somebody from each committee sitting on that, so that we would have that, they could take back to their, they coordinated things. Otherwise, we do have each committee doing their own thing, and then it ends up sometimes complicating things, because you have dual events and stuff. So that might be something we could pull back together.
We can look at that, and we've begun to work a little bit better with the Appearance Committee. We have coordinated some things, mainly on the lake, mainly at the chapel. But we can't have a discussion about Trade Street this year and then.
Look for budget time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alrighty, so right now, we're, everybody okay with what's been done so far?
Well, I know the Appearance Historic Preservation Committee also wanted to do, for the, to get back onto the Christmas stuff, was also looking to do, not only luminaries, but also do a hayride down the Trade Street area. And so we wanted to see about doing that this year, but we have to get Trade Street closed for that event also.
Well, and I think that's where we missed that piece too, is the Special Events Committee that we used to pull in to play, that worked with Parks and Rec, so that if you wanted to do a special event before you did it, any committee, you had to submit it to that committee. And then that way, it was all coordinated on the same calendar, and Parks and Rec headed that one up. I don't believe we've had a Special Events Committee meeting in this year, but we, previously, we did have that, and that committee coordinated all the events, because you had to ask to have the event, you couldn't just schedule an event. So that might be an option too.
So what can we do, since we don't have that committee?
I would go through Parks and Rec, because they head up all the event stuff, right? I mean, before you schedule an event, y'all are the, y'all are the.
Y'all gonna wear Lamarcos out walking up there.
We still have the committee, but we only meet if there's a big event that's been requested. And it's typically sixty days, better, it's ninety days before the event. So we still meet, it's all the departments, fire, police, etc. So we still have the committee, but we just haven't had the need to meet, because most of the stuff's been routine that we've had lately, like 5K runs, things that don't require the full, full committee meeting. So, we haven't had, we haven't had, you know, a big event outside of what we already do in Parks and Rec, so we haven't met.
So these other events that are tacking on to Christmas, and would it be good to somehow coordinate that? So we got one calendar that has everything on it?
That definitely helps, at least we know what everybody's doing.
Okay.
Question, if I may. Teresa Davis, Hope Village Historic Preservation Committee, Denise Gaskin. We just want to know, because we've already had some donations of materials, if we can just go ahead, and we, we will supply the labor, it won't require fire permit, because it's battery operated, it's all biodegradable. We'll set them up, we'll clean them up. Luminaries, and we've talked about this earlier, from, basically from using landmarks, the parking lot beside the chapel, to the lake, both sides of the street, and Trade Street.
Is there any reason we can't let them do that? If there's not, I would make a motion that we let them decorate as they see fit for Christmas.
Um, there's no.
Who knows? That's the key.
It depends on what the decorations are, as long as they don't create a hazard of.
Paper bags and lights.
Paper bag sand and a battery-operating candle inside.
We did some, some at the chapel last year, I think the Appearance.
Yeah.
So we did that last year.
No, okay.
Well, I remember when we had paper bags of sand with the real candle inside.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
And they were lined way up and down the road.
Okay.
And and if I could add to what Teresa said, well, we're getting a lot of donations, a lot of people interested in these bags. And why we want to focus on historical area in front of the chapel, Trade Street, and we get a lot of donations. Like to go further up Main Street. You don't need it.
No, I know.
Hey, Ms. Teresa, how are you? How are you?
There you go.
I've seen this before. We did this with, we used to have them in town.
The number of donations we get is going to be how many bags will be, and we would like.
We did this years ago, didn't we?
Main Street, light up Trade Street.
Yes.
Depending on what donations come, Parks and Rec does not need to be involved. We've got a team of jeepers.
Yes.
And team on the Historic Preservation Committee, there are two lights. I don't know of a fire hazard on any of these.
Two light batteries.
And if any of you would like to make a donation, you see the suggestion about there, we'll be glad, ten dollars and up, we'll be glad to. So you can gladly.
Okay.
And our budget does have a Christmas budget. Has Christmas, yeah, in in the budget that the board approved, that the budget retrieved, we actually do have Christmas on that budget. So if we needed to, to take some of that money, but obviously I think we'd probably do it on a donation. We've got a lot of interest in that.
All right.
Okay, all righty, thank you, ladies. All right, the um.
I don't need the motion.
Do I miss, need to withdraw that motion?
Yeah, we don't, I think we're good.
Don't need the motion, good.
We don't need the motion, we're good.
It's like spring cleanup, just clean it up.
Clean it up, yeah. We don't, we don't need the motion, we can just, he just gonna be, he's retracting the motion. It's already gone beyond motion. All right, um next thing we have, of course, we don't have another meeting um because Thanksgiving, our next meeting is not until December. Uh we also have a liaison report, so Commissioner Marley, do you have anything for historical preservation?
Yeah, we've already, we've already talked about most of it.
Okay.
Hold on just one second. Um. So we've already talked about luminaries, but um they did meet on November the uh second. Uh they discussed a Mill Village celebration, uh it was well-received. Uh the committee would like to thank Reverend Ron Gobol for serving as master ceremonies and DJ Brown for the outstanding entertainment. Um. They had several guests that shared stories of their younger years growing up in Hope Mills. Um we've already talked about the luminary project. Um they asked him, anyone wishing to help is invited November thirtieth. Uh starting at two thirty P M. to help fill the luminary bags with sand. Uh all materials will be provided, the address is thirty-seven oh eight South Main Street. Um anyone who would like to assist in lining the historic district um with these luminaries, uh please meet at the same address on Friday. December the second at three P M. Um the route will be from thirty-seven fifteen South Main to chapel, uh in front of the lake, cross over to Trade Street. And down to thirty-seven twelve South Main. Um also with that, tentatively, they are wanting to plan a uh hayride. Um pending conversations uh with Hope Mills Police Department. Um and concerning any permits that they would need. Uh if the hayride takes place, um they're asking for a donation of canned food for one dollar. And all proceeds will support the Alms House, uh the hayride will support the Alms House, so uh that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Mitchell?
Well, I didn't make the last meeting, let the Commissioner scroll aside in my absence, so.
It's yours. Okay, um so the Appearance Commission, the big dis, part of the discussion of the Appearance Commission was for uh Christmas at the lake. Um they were going to have, um I don't know if I want to spill the beans about the characters. They're gonna have characters show up there, there's gonna be milk and cookies, or hot chocolate and cookies. Um there's going to be um five, I want to say five different sets of carolers um coming from schools. One was called the Travelmakers from Pitch Perfect. Um so there's a bunch of carolers for the um the event at the lake, I want to say, is that the second or the third, December second, I believe. Um that was the main part of the discussion, um was for the event at the lake, so. That's all I had.
Okay. Mayor Protiun?
Um I have a lot of information, but I'll try to be brief. Um I'll start with the Hope Mills promovers. Again, thank you for everyone who supported um the concert on the lake on October the thirtieth. On November the nineteenth, there will be a mass food uh distribution at Southview High School from nine to twelve. Um usually the food, we're doing it in conjunction with Thanksgiving, so it'll be like um some meal preparation to help families get through the holiday. And they will be doing um lunch for some of the Parks and Rec staff, or all of the Parks and Rec staff, for all of their help. That they usually help them coordinate with their activities. On December the fifteenth, they're going to have a Christmas uh celebration, they're going to coordinate that, but they're also going to adopt the family for Rockfish. And at that Dec- December fifteenth function, they'll ha, they'll put out information about the things that that family needs, they'll collect the items. And then they'll be meeting with the social worker on the sixteenth, hopefully, to get those gifts to the, to the families before Christmas holiday. Um eventually, they would like to work with the Alms House Commissioner Mitchell to do um, to feed, to help feed the community one day. And then I'll move over to Parks and Rec, and there's a lot of things going on before we meet again. So with Parks and Rec, the chapel restroom um with sixty percent complete with the construction, it looks really good if you go by there. Um the splash pad, they hope to have the splash pad, the chapel restroom complete, and the basketball court completed by Christmas time. Um as we've mentioned before, Vic Blynn, um Vic Blynn's the barber that's from Hope Mills, he is helping to put a mural on the basketball court. And wants to do some type of celebration, maybe around Christmas time to um to uh do a opening or a grand reopening of the basketball court with the mural on it. The Hope Mills um, the golf course complex update, they have uh submitted a request for qualifications for engineering firms to design the fields for the sports complex. And the cementals are due by November twenty-second. Heritage Park, the design is ninety-five percent complete with construction. Uh basketball signups are open through November twenty-seventh. Um they are having a Peyton Chew party on December the sixteenth. And just a couple of reminders, there is Christmas at the lake on December the second, breakfast with Santa on December the third. Registration will be open until November the twentieth, the Christmas parade is later this year at five P M. on December the third, so make sure you take note of that. And registration for the parade is open until November the twentieth. Letters from Santa, you can participate in that, registration is open for that until December the eleventh, and letters will be sent out the week of December the twelfth. And um it's a lot. And then you can also participate in a Southern Christmas, where you can um get with Parks and Rec, and they are working with the Lynn Richards Group in conjunction. You can get a tree and you can decorate it, the trees will be placed out on next week, and they can be displayed and decorated November the twenty-eighth through January the fourth. I think I got the gist of it.
That's all, Madam Mayor.
All righty. I still have the Veterans Affairs Committee, Madam Mayor.
All right, get ready.
Humble apologies. Um so the Veterans Affairs Committee, of course, we got Heroes Homecoming going on as we speak, um we had the parade uh Saturday. Um we also have upcoming Reeds Across America, um you can go on their website, and you can actually order the wreaths, and you can have them. Um you can select, I want to say, the specific ceremony you want them laid at, and we'll, we'll be able to place them at the ceremonies uh locally for Hope Mills. Also, we have, of course, um this Friday, um we have our Veterans Day ceremony with their uh field of flags. Um that will be uh at three P M.
Okay.
That was what we got.
All righty, um the only thing I'll add to what I've already done is that we do have FAMPO on the November thirtieth meeting, and that'll be before we um have our next meeting. All righty, this time, do we have? Huh?
I don't have one.
He does, yeah. All right, do, any staff comments? Yes, sir? That's right, you have, congra, congratulations, I was hoping you were gonna tell them about it.
Um, did that too, but.
Okay.
First, first and foremost, um in the spirit of Christmas, um we have an ordinance at the lake that um prohibits dogs. This year, the clauses, Mister and Misses Claus would like to do photos with dogs on December the third. And so we're here tonight to have you consider to waive the ordinance um for three hours from twelve to three. To allow the clauses to take photos with dogs at the lake by the tree. If it's your pleasure.
May I ask?
Do we need to make a motion for this?
What's the responsibility on the town that that dog shouldn't attack someone?
It's, it's, the owner's on the only, but I'm I'm assuming that the owner will be present, and it'll be in their lap along with Mister and Misses Santa Claus, so.
And also cleaning up after them?
Absolutely.
Do we need to place a disclaimer or something up to? Uh what?
There's still leash laws that apply, some dogs have to be in the leash.
Right.
Uh I don't think the county necessarily has to be talking for some ass of dogs.
I hate somebody attacking.
Yeah, as long as people pick up after themselves, so legally true.
Do we need to make a motion?
No, we didn't get informed, we.
Yeah. Waiving the ordinance from twelve to three.
Facebook, and my apologies, but um um my staff talked to the clauses about doing this, and business clause had the idea. And, you know, and he said, whoops, there's a, there's an ordinance about the dog thing, so that just crossed out my day, so.
Tell them that caught us on a good day.
Okay, do we have?
I make a motion, I make an emotion to amend the ordinance to allow dogs to be at the lake on December the third from twelve to five.
Twelve to three.
Twelve, twelve to.
With small correction, how many ordinance would you suspend?
Go ahead, suspend it.
Suspend an ordinance for December the third from twelve to three.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, thank you, sir, now tell them the other good news.
The good news, okay, so I know there's been delays in Heritage Park with the archaeology, but we applied for a grant about seven months ago. So we got word on Friday that we had an additional twenty thousand dollars. So um thank you for your patience, um my staff did a lot of um hard work getting them information, but they were successful. The thing is, though, I will be back before you in January, if not December, to get permission to accept the grant and sign the contract. So I'll be back before you.
I think we only have one meeting in December, is that correct?
And that's early December, so it it it's probably more like January, it takes them a while to generate the budget, right? Of course, I'll turn you, but I think.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, good job.
Okay. Any other staff comments? All right, do we have a motion to go to closed session?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to N C G S one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight six personnel.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, we'll be right back as soon as we finish. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order, do we have a motion? Or first?
Oh. Oh, let me see. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the set, move, to move the minutes of the closed session into such as time when the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further no action was taken.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, do I have another motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion uh that we direct the town attorney to draft an addendum to the town manager's current contract to increase his annual salary by five thousand dollars. The salary will become effective the first pay period of December twenty-twenty-two, and will be prorated for the remainder of the year of twenty-twenty-two, and for the remainder of the contract. Further, I would like to move that the board allow the mayor to execute the contract addendum.
Okay, have a motion, to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Do we have another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, we'll see you in December, happy Thanksgiving.
Merry Christmas.